Please rise and join us on the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any justice.
Chairman, away from me.
Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Attleboro School Committee meeting on Monday, October 3, 2023, 2022. Excuse me. This is your reminder and notice that this meeting has been electronically recorded. We're going to jump right into it tonight with our business agenda, and I will turn it over to the superintendent, Mrs. Sawyer.
Thank you, Chairman Weathers. At this time, I'd like to call out to join us at the table Mr. Matt Buchanan and Julie O'Boyle. So, as you know, we had quite a bit of change in administrator ranks this year, and we are still getting through all the introductions. We were excited to have the high school team here last time, and tonight we decided we would take care of Brennan. So, as you know, this summer, we learned that we needed to find a new principal for Brennan Middle School, and I am very pleased to introduce you tonight to Mr. Matt Buchanan. Matt is a was born and raised in Providence, Rhode Island, where he went on to be a career educator there with the Providence Public Schools. He rose to the ranks and became an administrator, had several different administrative assignments there before he landed what I consider to be a very impressive job with as principal of Somerville High School. And that's where we were able to nab him from, and very happy to have him and all of his experience come in here to Attleboro to lead Brennan Middle School. So, welcome, Matt.
Yeah, it's you. Well, we all know it takes the village to help these kids. My village is here with me, my mom, my dad, who came through the wrong door, so. My son Jonathan, my two babies, and I know it's a issue who came from Vegas. They went to Vegas and I came back with a kid, came back with a new one. So, I'm really happy to be here. It's been amazing one so far. I mean, the opening, super, super supportive. The Brennan team is amazing. And so Boyle has been a guest. She's, I'm sorry, but this is my no Attleboro, so she knows who to talk to, when to talk to them, how to talk to them. Sometimes my tone can get, can be a problem, and then Julie's really kind of helping me kind of get my tone. So, I'm really excited. I think central office problem, like I told Laurie today in the last week, has been the most instrumental that I've had in my years in working with central office. If not us first, it's definitely us being working together. So, I'm excited about the opportunity. The kids at Brennan are absolutely amazing. You know, seeing them in the classrooms and seeing them engaged and seeing them focused is something that I'm really looking forward to. Lots of new issues here. We've had a few events already where teachers came out, I mean, where parents came out. We had coffee hour, we had a welcome back night. Families are really excited about our communication regularly, and so hopefully honeymoon period last morning, you know, last, last morning as well. I'm really excited about the opportunity. Thank you, Superintendent Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, School Committee. And thank you to my village.
I know that we were very blessed to be able to land such a high-quality candidate during the summertime. You know, it's always sort of hit or miss at that time of year. And, you know, I want to thank the Brennan Search Committee that helped with that process. And I know that Laurie and I shared their perspective that in Matt, we have a student-centered leader, has real passion for, you know, looking after the interests of the students in his care, has high expectations for students, and rounds out his skill set with some excellent people skills that we know are really essential in leading buildings in this district. So, we're very, very happy to have Matt.
Well, I'll start by saying welcome. Welcome to Attleboro. We look forward to working with you. I'm not only a Brennan grad, but a parent of two Brennan students right now myself. So, as your assistant knows as well, she knows them from Willett, and they've, everything they've reported is has been very positive about the change in leadership and what's going on over there. And as you know, children and students, especially middle school age, are the probably the toughest judges there are. So, I'm proud, I'm proud to have heard that and look forward to working with you. So, welcome to Attleboro.
Mr. Larson?
Welcome. Look forward to seeing how things go at Brennan. That's where all my kids went, so it took us about 11 years to get through Brennan, but we made it. I think they did better than I did. So, no, it's a great school, and I wish you a lot of luck.
Mr. DaVinci?
Thank you. I just, again, welcome. And Lisa, I know you've been in the Attleboro Public Schools, but I echo your sentiments. Middle School is really where we know we have them, and you need strong leadership to keep kids on the right course. So, I'm excited that we were able to get such strong leaders in place with such little time upon hearing notice that we we lost the prior principal. And being from Rhode Island and having an understanding of the Providence Public School systems, I'm excited for some of your experience to be in to Brennan, and I'm excited to see, you know, what the school year brings. So, any way we can be helpful, we're here.
So, Matt has brought Julie, who many of us know already. You know, Julie's truly an Attleboro product in many senses. Spent much of her career at Willett, has been a longtime instructional coach. She was an officer in the AEA. And with Julie, we know that we're getting really strong teaching and learning chops, real pedagogical technician, great use of data, you know, the kinds of things that really make Attleboro the special place that gets what it gets done with the resources we have. So, we feel very blessed that she has accepted the call to make the move up to what we know to be a challenging job in administration. So, we're very happy to welcome Julie O'Boyle.
Thank you. I'm very, very happy to be at Brennan. I thought I was going to miss Willett quite a bit. I do. But the fact that more than half of the kids at Brennan were former Willett kids, it really makes a difference. I do find I look at them and sometimes I have to do a little page progression, you know, to kind of figure who they are. But yeah, it's very, very surprising. But yeah, to give just a little bit more of my background, I am a graduate of Attleboro High School, and I actually did my student teaching in Attleboro. I've been a day-to-day sub, I was a long-term sub, I was a paraprofessional classroom teacher, inclusion classroom teacher, head teacher, teacher leader, you know, all the types of things. So, it's just sort of more and more adding on. So, I think it's pretty neat that it's also nice that I have a little bit of a different perspective because I've been in basically everyone's shoes now. So, you know, quite a bit of them, which has really been, really been great. And, you know, at first I was a little bit, oh, I'm middle school? And then when I got up there, I went, yes, yes, I do, you know. And one of the things that's very nice about having so many familiar students is there are some of them that I can have a conversation with. They talked about this in second grade. Do I really think we talk about this again? And some of them just kind of look at you and you're like, yeah. So, it really has been. And I am very, very happy to be there.
Thank you. Well, we're happy, Mrs. Boyle, to have you there. I refer to you as his assistant because I, in a moment of panic, was getting ready to call you Julie. But Mrs. Sawyer did it, so I don't feel so bad calling you Julie now. But we're glad to have you at Brennan. It's good to, you know, with new leadership, to have also some continuity with Attleboro and, you know, how the system works, the kids, and the administration. So, I think that's really a nice combination that we have at Brennan. So, welcome to the new position.
Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just again, I love when we see the homegrown administrators. You know, they've been here so long, they know the system, they come up. It's great when we can also find great candidates from outside, but seeing the homegrown ones really means a lot to me. You know, it just shows our staff and our students and our community that we are dedicated to our staff, we want to see them grow, we want them to succeed. And then also, having a team is such an important thing to have a complimentary team, and that's what I see in the two of you from from the limited, you know, what I've seen so far. And that's a great thing. And I can just see so many great things happening in the coming years for Brennan. So, welcome.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Again, welcome, Mr. Buchanan. Very excited to have you. And pretty much going to echo what Mr. Storrs said. I'm very excited that we have the institutional knowledge and the homegrown Albarian, Albarian, and the perspective from outside in from both Providence Schools and Somerville. I just think this is going to be a really great combination, and I'm excited to see what the year, years will bring. So, welcome.
Well, thank you again, and look forward to, I'm sure we'll see you in this room again for school reports and other exciting events. So, best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have a, we have another exciting introduction for you this evening as well. I'll call up Ms. Campbell and Mr. Miller and Mr. Maderos.
I am very proud and lucky to introduce two of our Attleboro High School students. We've got Ian Miller and Zach, well, Zachary, but he's going to go by Zach, right? Maderos. And I could talk about academics and sports and music and all those things, but what I want you to know, as both of these young people will be joining you at School Committee this year, they're great people. So, I just want you to know that all these nice things we can say about them, but what I've learned very quickly is really the nice individuals Ian and Zach are. So, what we were going to do is kind of talk to you about some of our ideas on their roles when they join the team and see how that goes. It's a little bit different than in the years past, but we think it will be perfect for this year. All right, Ian Miller. You can stay right there. You're fine.
Yeah, I'm really excited for what this will bring. And I think it's important to have like a student view of how everything's going on in the school because I have like, as students, we have our own perspective. We see what's going on. We're affected by decisions that all of you guys make by everything that happens within the school system. So, I think it's really good that we'll be able to have a say and have you guys hear our opinions and how we see things.
What were two things that you felt were important that you thought we'd be sharing as the, lots of things that we talked about, but your favorite too?
So, one thing I really like about the new school is how, so I wanted to do science when I go to college. So, one thing I really like is how in each class, science classroom, you have labs built into the classroom, which is so much more useful than how it used to be with one big lab. So, you can have a lab whenever you want, and there's way more accessible to the classroom. And I play soccer, so I really like how we have the new weight room, the new gym. It's all very useful. We also have a new yoga room, which our soccer team's been using a lot, and it's really, really helpful for us. So, really good new additions to the school.
So, yeah, I'm Zach Maderos. Again, I'm just excited to be a part of this whole thing, and I'm excited to give my perspective to you all here. Some things that I was thinking about talking about throughout the year, one thing was like, you know, the student perspective and everything. One thing that we've seen this year, which has been great, is that there's been a lot more community, we feel, within the student body. Like, the students are showing up to a lot more, like different sporting events to just support each other more than they have in the past, and there's been less like negativity and fighting and all that. And we just feel overall that our move into this school, into this new building, has been like very smooth, all things considered. So, we're really excited to just start working with you all.
Thank you, Ian and Zach. From my understanding that in the past, the students from the high school would represent all of the schools with some updates. But what we'd like to do, since it is a new school and so many new things coming from the high school, we'd like to really be able to focus on the high school and share some presentation when that's on the agenda and some of their, some of our updates from the high school. Because we do think that there's so much to be sharing this year that we think we should focus on the high school. If there are areas that you would like us to go further into the district and bring back from the other buildings, we can do that. But Zach, Ian, and I feel that there's a lot that we should be communicating about the high school this year.
I think that that sounds great, and I look forward to you guys joining us in an official capacity. I think it's, you know, it's a good way. My brother actually did it when he was in high school, so it's a good opportunity for you guys, I think, to, you know, see how the sausage is made, so to speak, you know, what, you know, how. And also, speaking in a room full of adults on camera is an excellent opportunity for you, and I give you kudos for doing it because it's, it's not easy doing it. It's not easy doing it as an adult who does it often. And, you know, for you guys to have the courage to get up and do it, I think speaks volumes to the two of you. And I think the more you can tell us about what's going on at the, at the new school, I think the better we are for it, and the more informed we can be in making our decisions. I think that as we went through COVID and some more other controversial issues over the past few years, getting the input from the students, the high school students was really, was really key, I think, in helping us reach decisions, even if we didn't always agree. Getting that input is huge for us. So, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, welcome. Yeah, I feel the student's voice is always one of the most critical things that we can hear. We don't hear enough of that because we do rely on our administration and our teachers to provide that feedback. But hearing it directly from the students as representatives, from the students to us, I think that's, you know, it's critical. It's a good thing. I would definitely ask you guys to, you know, take a look at the agendas that are coming out and see topics that are on the agendas. And if there is a place where you can provide information to us, that's going to help us in our decision-making process. Also, I love the fact that both of you have experienced the old high school and the new. So, that's going to be a unique perspective, and you're going to be able to share with us what's working, what's better, where we can make improvements, and those are things that are going to be very valuable in the coming months. So, welcome again.
Mr. Larson?
So, welcome. A little repetitive, but just to go along with what Mr. Storrs did, his comment, that we are looking for you to participate in the meetings in questions, comments. So, you know, take the opportunity to look through the agenda ahead of time, and don't be afraid to ask questions. We, we don't mind explaining, hopefully we can, why we're doing what we're doing. So, look forward to it.
Thank you. We do agree with you in that as the year progresses, we feel it's so important for the students of Attleboro High to have a voice. In order for this to truly become our school, all of us together, we want them to have say in some of the changes, in some of the goals. But I think this is a nice opportunity to connect the high school and the students' lens and school committee.
Great. Great.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach came right from his game.
How do you guys do today?
So, Ian came right from his game. Zach was at music, so they had him eating dinner. So, I said that if it's all right with the committee, I'm going to excuse them, and I'm going to go to.
Hey, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple quick other updates for the committee this evening. One, I know I've received a couple queries into why we haven't been able to broadcast the last few meetings of the school committee live, and I just wanted to address that to say that the problem is that the room is still missing some of the components we need. So, we're waiting on equipment. When that equipment arrives and is installed, AACS will be able to continue a live broadcast of our meetings. But until that stuff comes in, we're going to have to tape these things and then put them up the next day, the way that we have the last couple. And that's just a function of, one of the many things in this building that, you know, we're still working out and a couple things that need to be delivered. So, it's just part of that overall transition into this building and ironing out all the wrinkles.
They've all been aired though, right, the next day?
Yes. Yeah. Yep, they're available online, but I know that some people have been tuning in at the regular time and not finding us there and wondering what was going on. The other thing I wanted to give you an update on is Aptig, which is the service we bought to improve communication. It runs our website and some of the other tools that we're using. This summer in August, in my letter to families, I explicitly asked families to download the app. At this time, we have 5,000 downloads of the app. So, that's, that's a pretty significant saturation. We're very pleased that we have that many. But it's clear, because of some hiccups we're having along the way, that not everybody has, has joined us, taken up that request. So, we still have more work to do. We'll continue to identify some of the stragglers who have somehow not caught the message that they need to download the app. And we also have some people who are resisting downloading the app. And so, trying to make the case for why this is a sound choice on their part to download that app is something that we'll continue to work on with families. And I think that as more and more people use it and buy into it and talk well of how it's going, we'll certainly bring over the last few people. But I think a majority of families at this point do have the app.
I mean, I understand, you know, that there may be some families that don't have the ability to download the app, which is understandable. What would the argument be for not wanting to or resisting downloading the app if they had the capability of?
I don't personally understand it.
Right, no, I understand, I understood you probably didn't agree or understand it.
Well, no, I obviously don't agree. I'm asking them to do it. But in terms of like, I understand the argument, I don't. But, you know, I find that, I mean, we could ask anyone, ask people to do anything, and there'll be some people who, you know, don't take kindly to being requested to do anything. So, we'll work on that. I think actually that the majority of people who haven't done it yet really fall into the category of somehow missed the message.
Okay.
And for the people who claim that they didn't know, I'll refer them back to the letter that I emailed everybody in August. So, you know, we have been trying, we'll continue to try, you know. It's, it's not 100%. And I want to acknowledge that we know that it's not 100%. But in 5,000 downloads, I mean, that's more than, that's more than we have families. So, now, of course, you know, two people are family, that's, you know, that's not everybody. So, we do have a ways to go. And we also have, we're learning how to use the tool as well. I know that one concern that had been raised by some families was that they weren't getting push notifications, that there was new information to see in the app. And so, we realize, so there's, there's a couple different components to that. One, you have to turn on the push notification. You have to sign up for the schools you want to be a part of in the app. You then have to sign up, you have to put in that you want push notifications in the app. You have to allow the push notifications through the phone. And then, the person posting has to remember to add a push notification to the post. So, there's a lot of components that go into the push notifications working, and we're going to work on messaging the family, the things that they knew need to do. And we're working with the principals to make sure the schools do a better job because we do think it will improve communication if people get the push notification of just the little, you know, the red badge on the app that shows that there's something new in the app. We want people to see that, you know, they've received information, you know, to ensure that they know that there's something there waiting for them. So, there's a lot of these things that we're working through. It's, it's new, it's a new tool for us, it's a new tool for families. We know that we'll get there. But now that we've, we feel like we've sort of moved past the initial phases of just getting people to download the app. And our, as I think I mentioned, you know, we did a lot of work around the open, the back-to-school nights over the last couple weeks. So, I think most families are aware, and again, I think a lot have joined us. We're now shifting towards our implementation of rooms, which is the tool within Aptig that was replacing Remind that allows two-way communication between staff members and both families and students. You know, for very young students, obviously, we won't be using that. But as the kids get older, communication between adults and students actually becomes pretty helpful. I know in middle school, you start to see more of that. At the high school, there's quite a bit of it. It's also for staff members that aren't necessarily classroom teachers. Our coaching staff at the high school, right, they, they need to be able to communicate with their athletes on their team. Up until we had, we started using Remind, they were just using their phones to communicate with, with, you know, our athletes. And in terms of best practices, there's a lot of things to be concerned about with, you know, having adults and children having communication that isn't archived and available for everyone to see in case there's any question about the nature of that communication. So, this app will allow us to push all of that into a place, which is a safe space, that's being monitored, that allows us to check to see if people have questions about something that was said or something wasn't said, or however that plays out. So, there's quite a bit of work to do on that. Rooms has been, been implemented, it's been turned on, parents are seeing it in the app. Our teachers have largely published their classes, which is the way that they make themselves available. But I have to admit that, you know, we're not, not everyone is quite ready to make the most of it. I know both on the staff sides, you know, some people are going to need more training, and then families are going to need some help too. So, this is a work in progress. But we do have some people who are off to the races, they're early adopters, they're very comfortable, they get it. We're going to learn from them as they get out there and start using this and take the best practices that we learn from that to make sure that in the end, everybody's using this. We think that this is going to greatly improve communication between families and the schools. So, that's the next step. And I'll just say that, you know, sometime in the future, when we feel like, you know, we've got things to a certain point that we really feel confident in what's happening and our ability to deliver on the promise here, we will circle back and do a presentation about Aptig and the various things that it does for us and how it works and update the committee on its use. But we're not quite ready for that yet. All right. And then the final thing I want to do is just to give you a quick update on hiring. You know, at our last meeting, we talked about the fact that there were still vacancies. I want to let you know that we still have vacancies in the district. You know, the good news is that they're not the same vacancies we had the last time we've had. We've filled those vacancies for the most part. The problem is, is that we keep having people resign. I think the labor market is a very different context than any of us have ever really experienced in education. It used to be that you could pretty much count on people taking a job and understanding that that was for that year. And it was a pretty rare event that someone said, well, you know, I don't think this is really for me, and quit with, you know, two weeks' notice. I mean, that's really kind of how schools work. But it's a different world. It's hard to find people. We're working really hard at it. But we do want to acknowledge that we still have vacancies. But those vacancies, while the number of vacancies is less than it was at the start of school, it's still at a number that is, you know, something that, you know, we're concerned about. And it's a product not of us being unsuccessful in finding people. We're actually pretty happy with the job we've done in finding people. It's, the problem is that we keep getting new vacancies by people, by virtue of people leaving. So, that's an ongoing challenge, and it certainly is disruptive to the learning environment. I know I have fielded several calls and emails from families concerned about there at the classroom that they have that's affected, and we appreciate that and understand why people are concerned about that. And we're doing everything we can to keep, you know, the classroom experience as stable as possible. But it is a challenge, and it's one that I wanted to give you that brief update on.
Is this, is it, is this just something that's similar to what we're seeing and reading about statewide and even nationwide? Or is there something, is there anything specific to Attleboro or any of the schools that you're concerned about?
My perception is this is part of a national trend. But again, the job market is tough in almost every field, as far as I can tell. And there are different attitudes about work as we come out of the pandemic. I've read several various articles that talk about how there's just a lot of people that, you know, just view work differently than we have historically. And I got to be honest with you, while there are many ways in which being an educator presents, you know, a good set of trade-offs for people that are in certain situations, there are ways in which it's challenging, right? You know, what our educators come and do every day isn't easy. And, you know, we are lucky that we have such a dedicated group. And, you know, we, on a certain level, take for granted the fact that, you know, they come and do what they do, and, you know, we make it all work. You know, this is sort of a, an indication of what that looks like when you have less eager and happy-to-be-here people, right? It's, it's not, it's not, it's not a fun job if you don't enjoy the work with the kids. And, you know, I don't think it surprises anybody that that's not for everybody. And as we scrape the bottom of the barrel, I think, you know, it's, we're not able to be picky as much as we used to be. So, that's part of it too, is that, you know, we're giving things a try, and some of them are working out, and some of them aren't.
Mr. Larson?
Glad to hear it's not just us.
Yeah, right?
I think you and I could sit down and compare stories back and forth with similar situations. I mean, the things that we've seen, I don't ever remember seeing. And people just wondering, yep, changed my mind. This wasn't, wasn't, wasn't what I thought it was going to be. And that's it. They walk out. I have a supplier who, one of their managers, actually, at 11:55 on a Friday night, sent her effective immediately resignation to her boss. No idea. Just, so it is truly a unique situation from a deployment point of view. Kind of hoping we get out of it soon, perhaps. Let's see.
Ms. Johnson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So, two, I have two main concerns. One is we are so deep into the school year right now. What are some of the recruitment efforts we are pursuing? And I understand that, you know, so far, we've, we've been successful. But again, because we have so much more time elapsed now, you know, what do we anticipate that success rate to be? And then also, from the student perspective, for those vacancies that occurred unexpectedly, can you give some examples of things that we are doing as a, as a district to help with that continuity of learning?
Yeah, so our principals are being very creative in how Yeah, so, our principals are being very creative in how they plug the holes, both while there's still vacancy, and how they bring people up to speed quickly when they bring them on. You know, each one's different, but, you know, we're not just, you know, throwing a substitute in the room and saying, you know, "Have at it, good luck." You know, a lot of these situations include plugging someone in who's familiar with the building, familiar with perhaps even the curriculum, and, you know, taking them from a different role and putting them there, you know, sometimes temporarily while we wait to be able to bring the full-time person on. In some cases, they're the, they're the stopgap for the rest of the year, that we're moving over from one place to another, which, you know, creates a problem someplace else, which is why some of these vacancies are self-created. I mean, I have to tell you that I think that the biggest problem remains our paraprofessionals, which is why we've been going to contracted services for those. We've been hiring an outside agency, which we have to pay extra for, but we don't, we cannot fill our paravacancies. And that causes problems, because, you know, obviously, you know, the classroom teachers are the people who we need to be there and provide that continuity. So, when we come up with solutions to some of these problems, it often involves robbing from the pararanks to solve that problem, which only further exacerbates that set of issues. So, it is a major problem, but I think the impact has been pretty minimal, not zero, but minimal in most cases. And I think the principals have done a very nice job of not only responding quickly, but putting together plans to make sure that from here to there, we don't lose something.
And I've always been very impressed with the teachers and with the administration and how they can make the best of limited resources. But again, this is, you know, as both a school committee member and a parent, it's concerning. And, you know, and I hope that our teachers are getting the full support, or at least feel that they're getting the full support that they need in serving our students. So, you know, thanks to them for scrambling, and thanks to the administration for also scrambling.
A lot of scrambling.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Thank you. While any vacancies are a concern, I know that, you know, and maybe I'm looking at this with a little bit of a bias, I, sometimes, you know, when you have academics and you have different schools, and you may have a little more flexibility to kind of bridge a few gaps. But here, where we have 18 CTE programs, it might not be as easy to fill in. So, are we struggling at this point with any of our CTE programs and vacancies?
We did have a CTE resignation, and I know that Mr. Gay is working hard at networking. We have some leads, I don't believe we have secured a person yet, but, you know, he understands that we need to put that person in place as quickly as possible, and has been working hard to try to find a, you know, qualified candidate.
Yeah, I mean, that's, my concern is when something is a little bit more specialized and you have kids on a path.
Very hard to fill. It's that. But there were more than one candidates that, you know, he was looking into, is promising, and really speaks to, you know, the depths of his contacts and, you know, his reputation. I'm here to tell you, there were many years in which, you know, we didn't enjoy those kinds of results. So, we're very lucky that he's out there pounding the pavement.
Oh, yeah, not, this is not an indictment.
No, no, no.
You know, as Shannon pointed out, we're starting to get later into the year, so you start to.
Yeah, so, it's clear, there are no, there are no classroom vacancies that were present at the start of the year that are still vacant at this point.
Okay.
I have that right, correct?
There may be one or two at the high school.
I'm forgetting about the science.
Yeah.
Yeah. But in terms of the lower grades, that's not, that's not the case. I was a bit more K8. Yeah, so, when we talk about technical stuff, the hard-to-fill positions, yes. But even special education, we found people to fill the vacancies that were present at the beginning of the year. And, you know, we've made, we've made good strides in filling those. It's really about, you know, you get one full, and then, you know, another leap break someplace else is really the biggest problem that we're chasing.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
And if there is anybody watching that might have someone that they would recommend, what would be the best way for them to forward their resume?
I mean, there are, it's pretty easy to apply online through the website, if you go to the HR page, but anyone that, you know, has trouble with that, I mean, send it to me, we'll get it in the right hands.
Thank you.
And by the way, I mean, substitutes are an important part of this situation too, because where we don't have enough substitutes, that means that we have to pull from resources within the building to cover things, and that exacerbates the problem too. So, I mean, even people who are willing to try substituting for us, and again, you can do that one day a week, that adds up, it makes a difference. So, if there are people out there that would enjoy giving that a try, they should reach out, because we need the help.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. One other action item tonight, a motion to send to the municipal council for approval of payment of a prior year, a prior year-end obligations in the amount of $27,873.87 as broken down on the memorandum dated September 27, 2022, as included with your materials.
So move.
Second.
So, the memo for Mr. Fattato, as well as all the backup invoices, were included in your packet circulated. Does anyone have any questions or concerns for the administration? This all seems like pretty standard stuff. Mr. Fattato?
Yes, sir.
All right, seeing no other discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have minutes from our September 12, 2022 meeting. The minutes were circulated with your materials, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections, edits, questions? Mr. Larson wasn't here, so I had to prepare him, so how'd it do on my first try, all right?
Sorry about that, you look good.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda, three items tonight. Motion, number one, motion to accept the contractual obligation in the amount of $7.50 from Planet Aid, Inc., as broken down on the check receipt dated September 9, 2022. Motion to accept the contractual obligation in the amount of $109.50 from Planet Aid, Inc., as broken down on the check receipt dated September 16, 2022. And motion to approve an overnight international field trip proposal for 120 to 158th grade students to travel to Washington, DC from May 29, 2024 to June 1, 2024.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that concludes the consent agenda tonight. Subcommittee meetings, we'll start with policy and personnel. Mr. Storres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Policy and Personnel Subcommittee met on September 19. The following motions were brought forward. The first group came out unanimous from the Subcommittee, was a motion to note the review dates. I'm going to go through each policy and give you a status of where they are. Policy IHAI, occupational education. IJ-R1, procedure for reconsideration of instructional resources. IKEE, promotion and retention of students. And IMD ceremonies and observations, they all align with masks, so we're not recommending any changes, just noting the review date. Policy IHBAA, observations of special education programs, for the most part, we align, there are some minor differences per our process in Attleboro. IJOC, school volunteers. IKFBA, distribution of diplomas. And KHC, posting of signs and distribution of notices, flyers, brochures, and advertisements in the schools. They are different than masks, but they are per the process that we use here in Attleboro. I'm going to take up KHA separately. So, all the policies I just said, we're just looking to note the review date. Are there any questions on any of those? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Okay. Policy KHA, public solicitation in schools. The only thing we're really doing is removing the unnecessary note at the bottom, other than that, it aligns with masks. So, we're just noting the review date, other than that. So, any question on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. All right, next group. So, a couple of exhibits, we've been doing our best as a policy Subcommittee when exhibits are not necessary and they're more procedural. We allow the administration to put them into more of a procedure binder and handle them that way and take them out of the policy binder. So, motion to remove policy exhibits IJNDB-E1, Student User Agreement and Parent Permission Form, IJNDB-E2, the Staff User Agreement, and also remove the references to those two from policy IJNDB that came out, all those came out from the Subcommittee unanimously. Any questions regarding those? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. All right, next. Again, came out unanimous to align the following policies to the masked policies. We've been trying to do that over the last few years wherever we can. First one is policy GBA, equal employment opportunity, and GCF, professional staff hiring, and policy IJ, instructional materials, we're removing the note. Any questions on those? Yes.
Question, so, like, first, if I'm looking at GBA, and the, it looks like, were there changes other than the red lines?
It should have been only the red lines.
Okay, all right.
Okay. All right, any other questions on those? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Next section. So, we were just talking about, you know, substitutes, and this one has to do with substitutes of nurses specifically, is the change that we're looking. So, this is, it came out unanimous, a motion to approve the edits to policy exhibit GCG-E1, which is substitute pay rates. And again, it's specific to the substitute nursing, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Regan to give a little summary, please.
Thank you, Mr. Storres. So, as you heard, nurses also fall into this category of trying to find substitute nurses and hire nurses. There is a nursing shortage right now, and they can, you know, they, they are paid significantly more outside of education. And so, in order to be able to hire nurses that can actually compete with that rate, we wanted to increase the daily rate to $300 a day.
I think it's also important to note that each year, we have a list of substitute nurses that, you know, are on, you know, I guess you could call them on-call, and each year, they let us know if they want to be on that list. And this year, I think out of like 20 or something, we have one.
So, we have, as of September 26, we have one applicant.
Right. So, that just shows how critical this change is. So, again, this came out of the Subcommittee unanimous, and it has the pay increase as we just discussed. Is there any questions regarding policy GCG-E1? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. And lastly, as we all know, since back in January, we made the motion regarding the rebranding and how we're going to stay the Blue Bombed Ears. Mr. Fattato had formed a, at the direction of the administration, formed a Subcommittee that consists of Ms. Campbell, herself, Mrs. Campbell, Lisa from the marketing teacher, myself, and Mr. Hall from athletics. And we've been meeting over the summer, and we've been getting there, we've been fine-tuning things, we're heading in the right direction, we're getting close. And, you know, we do want to look to have some sort of big reveal, I guess you could say, in the next month or the month, actually, now we're looking a little bit into November. There's a lot of things that have to be done between now and then to be able to make that a reality. So, we needed to give the ability to the administration, working with the Subcommittee and working with the marketing students and the marketing teacher, to expend some of the funds that are already allocated for this purpose. So, a motion came out of the Subcommittee unanimously to authorize the administration to move forward with the plans being defined by the rebranding Subcommittee and expend funds as needed. So, I think everybody understands like where we're heading in the direction in having conversations with Mr. Withers. The plan will be when we get to the time where we are going to have the reveal, the event, whatever that event's going to be. I think right now, we're looking at maybe the Powderpuff evening, but that's subject to change. So, we're trying to find an evening where it's going to be students and community, where it could be a big event, where we could actually do a reveal of that nature. We'll probably have a special Subcommittee so that we can officially vote in the new, the logo and the mascot and the whole thing, and have a presentation from Mrs. Campbell, as well as Jeff Eagles, the marketing expert that we are working with, have a little presentation so you guys can understand how we kind of, the process that we followed, how we got where we are, the different decisions we made, why we chose certain things, questions can be asked, and then we'd be looking to approve that, and then have the reveal event not too long after that. So, for now, we're just trying to give the ability to the administration, to Mr. Fattato, and the marketing students and teacher to be able to start moving in that direction. So, again, the motion is to authorize the administration to move forward with the plans being defined by the rebranding Subcommittee and expend funds as needed. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Storres. Infrastructure and facilities, Mr. DiMaggio.
Thank you, Chairman. Reporting for infrastructure and facilities, we met on September 21. So, a lot of projects that have been going on over, over time, especially over the summer. Obviously, we talked about the high school, we continue to work through items. We opened on time, on schedule, but there is a punch list, as is normal for a project of this size and scope. And as people are coming in and using the school and utilizing it, you start to really get a feel for how the high school is working or how it's not. So, Consigli is going to be with us for at least another year and a half as we start taking down, we're already taking down the old high school, building out fields and parking lots. So, they continue to work daily through all the items that are coming up. So, largely positive feedback, but like anything else, even as Superintendent pointed out tonight, our ability to record live, just another item on the list that we need to address. Some of that's supply chain. We did quite well through the life of the project, dealing with supply chain issues. Right towards the end, there were a couple, a couple of hiccups, so we continue to work through them. Update on the train performance contract. We have provided HVAC upgrades in six of our schools, and we continue to work through, you know, infrastructure is in place and all. According to Mr. Fattato, and I believe we're probably still here, the train performance contract this phase is targeted to be completed by the end of the calendar year, which is about four months earlier than estimated. So, a lot of good work going on there, we're excited about. We do have an air conditioning project at Willett that's moving forward. Part of the funding we thought we'd be getting was through a state grant for air quality systems. Upon review of the qualifications and criteria for the grant, Attleboro did not qualify. But the city has put aside money, they're on board, and it's expected we'll use some of the SRF funds to complete that piece of the funding that we aren't getting from the grant. So, that's a project that's slated for the spring. Favorite topic of mine, the gym floors at Hyman Fine and Hill Roberts, as lastly communicated, I think, in one of our committees of the whole. We were expecting to have these completed by the end of the summer. There were a couple of issues with the floors on both ends. As of the time of our meeting, Hill Roberts was about 90% complete. I do believe they actually used the gym floors today. So, that's a, that's a good milestone for us, and I think we still have a couple of more weeks left on, on the Hyman Fine. So, it's close. Let's see, so we've covered train, gym. Thatcher parking lot was another project we were looking at. This is one we typically work with DPW. We usually piggyback off of their projects when it comes to paving and such. The city has informed the administration that they want us to go to bid on the project as opposed to working off of DPW. They're funding the project, but going out to bid, that's going to push it out, it's going to drive the cost up a little bit. And I think the plans are for the administration to kind of regroup with the city administration to kind of, kind of talk that through again, and see if maybe we can continue to do as we've done previously. So, more to come on that. And then, we had the solar project. This is one that's been moved out a few times, and as of our update, it's been moved out again. The potential start date is somewhere between May and June of 2023, and that again is about six or seven of our school buildings, parking lots, putting up solar. Actually, for me, that it's moved out to May or June is more preferable, as opposed to starting in like February or March where it was initially intended, like, if that, if it does stay on this track, it's less disruption to traffic in and out, parking and such. But while this project has moved out a few different times, I won't be surprised if by the time I give an update, we may, we may do that as well. Had no motions to bring out at this point in time, but we did as a Subcommittee vote to be in line with the full Committee and start our meetings going forward at 6:30. So, that is my update.
Thank you, Mr. DiMaggio. That concludes our Subcommittee meeting report for tonight. Next, we have open forum. Is there anyone who would like to address the Committee at open forum? Come on forward and state your name and address, please.
Mr. Withers, can I just ask, is that with procedural rule, or is... Mr. Withers, can I just ask, is that like a procedural rule, or, you know, the name and the address thing? Just curious.
Yeah, it's just a procedural.
Yeah, okay. So Elaine Marine, 500 Mendon Road, Attleboro.
Thank you.
As I listened to the September school committee meeting, I had, as at many other times, feelings of expectancy and being very proud of my town's education system for many reasons and on many levels. I see the dedication, the hard work, and thoughtful choices. And even in tonight's meeting, this, this school district is always trying to make things better, always looking forward. A couple of us have personally met with Superintendent Sawyer for some very honest conversations, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for your help. Ms. Regan, as well, you've been very helpful. Thank you for graciousness. But there's just some lingering concerns and questions that just won't go away. I must add that many problems, even those I'm going to mention here, are very well dealt with, but are compelled now to ask some hard questions. Could it be that Attleboro's education has evolved into a mixture of excellence in teaching and indoctrination that has eroded that excellence? Are students being weakened by adults of influence around them giving in to such things as furries? Is that truly a helpful thing to the educational process? Would it be wrong to suggest that any adult that tells a roomful of children that they can be anything they want to be, a dog, cat, or even an elephant, submit to a psych evaluation? What excuses could possibly have allowed such distractions in this circus-type atmosphere in education? Is this forming strong young people or weak, undisciplined, unruly ones that think the world revolves around them and their every whim? Are we modeling strong leadership to our students and giving in to all of this? Is there any longer a proprietary stance for true education in the classroom? Has anyone in all the wealth of intelligence found in the educational system actually looked down the road to see where this leads us? Because this slippery slope seems as lethal to our students, families, and community as drugs, alcohol, and guns. And what good can possibly come from promoting racial division, gender confusion, or a distorted history? What is all of this that has been led into our education system? Should the fact that we're more of a city-type system cause us to actually be extra watchful and guarded instead of caving into these things? I met a beautiful, intelligent, responsible, and motivated Attleboro High Schooler a few months ago. After conversing some, I asked a question that I wasn't even sure I really wanted an honest answer to. It was, is Attleboro High School promoting transgenderism? Almost choking on the word promoting as it felt too strong of a word. To my dismay, she quickly answered matter-of-factly, oh, yeah, every day. I said, wait a minute. You're actually saying promoting and not just accepting? Same answer. I clarified again. Same answer. But then again, the free school lunch program is actually tied to Biden's transgender education mandate. Is free lunch really worth it? Following some initial euphoria, there is much documentation on the, on the emotional torment, disruption to families, and suicidal regrets of many who's transitioned in a forever life-altering ways. Is this what education is supposed to be about? What about students being led in pledge of allegiance to the rainbow flag? And what kind of example is a teacher who is found not standing to pledge allegiance? Is this all just rogue teachers or really just the tip of an iceberg? The nagging distrust comes, yes, from the stories that pop up, but also in the well-shrouded, beautifully titled programs with all manner of perverseness beneath, and the fact that much learning is now online. And what to make of the mass exodus of teachers? Yes, it's happened nationwide. Some were surely in the twilight of their careers. Some burned out. But if they were to be individually interviewed, and, and other teachers went to other systems, and I get that, but if they were to be individually interviewed, how many stories might we hear regarding a struggle of conscience with all the turns education has taken? Might some say education should really draw out the strengths of students, not the weaknesses? That it should teach truth and promote discipline? That it should guide towards life-giving standards regarding family, community, and nation? And that it now seems to be going down a path to the very antithesis of these things? I do believe there are good teachers doing good things, and the good intent in this room is both seen and heard. But I encourage you to think about the mixture and ponder a solution to things that defile and weaken our education system and literally destroy students' lives. I pray for you all in, in your difficult positions, and also that parents, family members, and concerned citizens would be motivated to raise up their voices and help lead us out of this. This all being said, I know that to maybe a way bigger degree than I'm aware of, I know your hands are tied in many places. But I just can't help but speaking out. These are our kids. This is our future. So thank you for your time, and I do highly respect you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at open forum tonight?
Anthony Marine.
No, thank you.
500 Mendon Road, Attleboro. And, yeah, that was my wife. And I wasn't really planning on speaking, but just, just briefly, I, first, I want to, I admire a lot of the people here. I mean, the, the way the superintendent, the assistant superintendent in school committee, my wife, you know, calls them, and they take the time to spend time with them. I'm, I'm amazed at that. That's, that's pretty impressive. And, you know, I, I love what Mr. Lawson and Mr. Stor said to those two students that were here, and I just want to amplify that a little bit. I'd love to see students out there sitting and, and, you know, wanting to come up and speak. Maybe they have something on their mind, or maybe there is something that they're, they're afraid to speak because, I mean, they don't want the FBI at their house. I mean, it sounds laughable, but it's happening, and I'm not saying it's happening here. Although, the way things are accelerating, and, and this is, comes from federal level, and there are things on the state level that are, that are being discussed. And it is, I guess what we're mostly concerned about is the thing about promoting. I mean, if the Easter Bunny, if somebody wants to be the Easter Bunny, they come in, you know, you, you accept them and you, you help them and you do whatever you can, but that doesn't mean you have to teach everybody else how to hop. You know, it's, it's, and, and we don't, we just don't want being promoted. We don't want people's ideas being promoted. And, and, and I'll go further than that. If you disagree with that, you'll get slammed. And it's happening nationally. I think almost everybody knows that here. And that's the scary part. I mean, where's our freedom to disagree? Where's our freedom to, and I think a lot of teachers would fall in this category. I would love to see some teachers here, you know, and parents. I look around. Where are the parent, I would suggest the parents speak to their kids about what they're teaching in sex education, for instance. I mean, you won't hear a report of the details, but I'd love to know, and I could be wrong, but, I mean, there are agencies out there that are watchdogs, and, and I just heard of one today that says that these things are being, these radical type of ideas are being discussed in sex education. So I'm just saying to the parents, I, I guess I'm, I want to agree, I'm kind of sounding the alarm. We just want people to be aware, and we admire, and we'd all be against, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, Pontius Pilate said to Jesus, you know, you know, what is truth? I don't want anybody, I mean, the parents, it's the parent's duty to teach the kids, you know, their values. They're, I mean, it's becoming so absurd now on a national level that they're telling kids not to tell these things to the parents. If the parents get involved, even with these sex operations and so forth, I mean, these aren't things we're making up. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just sounding alarm that these things are going to start trickling down. You might have rogue teachers. I don't know. We're hearing things. We're not mentioning names, and, and I'm just sounding alarm. That's all. It's, to me, frankly, well, I won't say that, but I just, I just think we're living in incredible times and best intentions, and I know things are coming down from the, from the state and national, and I'm just sounding alarm to the parents. Parents, please speak to your kids. And I, I just call for courage in parents. I just, I just, and we do pray for all you guys. We do pray for the, yeah, I am a Christian, and I, I think all of this started when we took God out of the school system. But, and I would not promote that in the schools. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, we don't want, we don't want, we don't want anything promoted except, and, you know, even the administrators, we're getting more and more administrators. We're getting more and more specialties. I say just, let's teach them what we're here for. Let the parents do their job. Just sounding alarm, that's all. But I do admire a lot of people here, and you're doing, in general, I think you're doing a great job, and it's not an indictment about anybody necessarily here. It's just the sign of the times. And no matter what you do, I think it's coming. So just want to sound the alarm on that. That's all. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee tonight at open forum?
Jessica Payne, 9 Althea Street. So real quick, I just wanted to thank you guys all for all your work, but I was late getting here because I showed up at 6:33 as a busy parent trying to cart kids around, and I was late, and I rang the doorbell multiple times, and nobody answered. So a parent told me I had to go to the back, so I went to the back. I walked all the way through, couldn't get through that way. Then a student tried helping me, came back around, and luckily the janitor was there. So just wanted to comment that it made it very difficult for a busy parent. I almost walked away and went home, back home to my kids, who I left home alone, to fend for themselves to be here. So.
Yeah, so just so you, so you know, and other people, when they watch tomorrow, or whenever they watch, starting at our next meeting, we will have the door unlocked. We talked about this morning, because we had someone there until the meeting started letting people in, and like at the last building, it was unlocked for the meetings, and that will happen going forward.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the committee at open forum? All right, that will close open forum. Is there any new business tonight? All right, there'll be none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.